And with the expectations at five o'clock that we'll be able to have our meeting with the public. So I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it. Go ahead.
No.
Any discussion, on favor?
Aye.
All right. Get my chief sheet out here.
Now, I guess the discussion I should have asked that would eliminate the 23rd Tuesday meeting.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I figured. Thank you.
It's my turn?
Yep.
Okay. I remember we recessed into executive session under the following.
Hold on just one second. We're talking about the chief elected officer.
What's that?
The.
Did something get penciled in?
No, no, no. The chief elected officials agreement.
Let me look at it. Did I miss that? Oh, yes. I was looking down one too.
He was supposed to get pulled by Jordan.
Okay, we need to kind of discuss this. I did go to the meeting that was scheduled. It was a meeting. Um, and when we.
Might be the only one having a hard time.
We discussed a little bit about.
Commissioner.
On the, on last meeting.
Because of our masks, a lot of people in the back are having a hard time carrying, including Mr. Silver's and all this, even I'm not wearing yet.
Can I take my mask off?
I know. I'm saying if you could. I know it's tough, but.
Sorry.
Okay, well, anyway, this is an agreement. They call it a chief officials agreement in public meetings. And this is area local area five's workforce development board. All right, this deals with K-Works. I did go to the meeting and this is a 17 county board that is responsible for K-Works. K-Works is a 501(c)(3) and it is funded by the state of Kansas. But it is, it is basically run by the 17 county, 17 county board. We had our meeting and I think it's the first meeting they'd had since the last time. We had our meeting and I think it's the first meeting they'd had since the last time this agreement was signed. And it was signed in 2016 by Commissioner Albright. It does not cost us any money from the county standpoint, but it is a commitment from the counties to be on this board. They do have a president and they do have people that are operating this K-works function. And like I say, they do cover 17 counties.
They had some procedural changes within their agreement. Nothing of substance, but I did review it and legally it's, you know, fine with me.
So what I'm looking for is permission to sign this longstanding agreement with K-works.
I would make motion, Lynn, can sign the agreement with K-works.
Go here a second.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What's a sign that we need to get it back to? They don't need Woodton County. I gotta find Bourbon County. Right after Anderson, right?
Sign Lester's name to Anderson.
Sign Lester's name?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. He'd love that.
He would, wouldn't he?
Has he not retired yet?
No. He bought a new pickup instead.
Oh, really?
Commissioners, I want to commend Ms. Holdridge on this. This is something that she's been working on for some time. This is our 100-year-old problem. That we talked last week and she's finding dinosaurs or ghosts or whatever you want to call them. The last time we talked, she had up to 13 of them. So there's going to be, unfortunately, there's going to be some legal work that's going to be involved with this. And it's fixable. It's just going to take some time and we're going to have to go back and check some old minutes and see kind of what happened with some prior commissioners and things like that. I know we talked about another road that had a, basically was closed down and we have a gate issue and things like that. So these are the types of things that she's finding during her research. So we talked last week. She's kind of giving me a heads up on some of the legal issues that we're going to need to take up. You know, unfortunately, the end game is the district court if we have to go that far. But hopefully we can resolve some of these on the front end. But it does appear that two of these for sure are probably going to end up going through the court system because we're going to have a disagreement between the landowners. So just FYI. And so we're not, I don't want to talk about those specifically. So if we start touching into those, we'll have to go into executive session because it won't be possible litigation. It will be litigation most likely. So she's going to kind of talk about it in a big picture type thing. And if we have to go into specifics where we think there's going to be litigation, unfortunately, we're going to have to go into executive session. But I think she understands those two we're not going to talk about.
Right. Right. And yesterday I got one of the resolution books from Kendall's office. Because there's some in the box of resolutions that didn't actually have the resolution in it. When Kendall's office pulled some of the commission minutes, it talks about a resolution, but there wasn't one. So that's what some of these are. So I'm going back through and trying to find those. The boxes of resolutions. I'm done with the county now that's just left in this for the city roads. So I'm leaving those alone so we can try to get our county road records up to date. And then work with Eric on some of those since we have issues with some of the what's open, what's closed with those. And so this is the ones that I'm still trying to solve, just to give you an idea of. And none of us were here during some of these. Some of these go way back. Or we've got a road that's closed and a road down here that's still open. So it's like this is closed, but this one's open, you know? So it's stuff that we may have to go back and close some that we're still showing as open. But the road getting to this road is closed. So, but one of the other reasons I'm here too is that there was a fence viewing in 1990 that has a typo on it. And Security First Title brought this to my attention because the gentleman, it's on the gentleman's title policy. And he wants it off because the typo puts it, the original fence viewings up here. And because of the typo on his title policy, the typo puts his down here. So it's this fence viewing just needs to be corrected. And it was put of record and so, and it was given a book and a page. So it needs to refer to the legal as it was and corrected that it should have said and referred to this book and page and be put of record. And so therefore we can put it in both places as a corrected fence viewing. So anybody that does any title work will see that there was a corrected fence viewing and then put it in the proper place. And I can work with Kendall.
So you want to get the language together for us to do that?
Yes, I can work with Kendall of how it needs to go. And it will need to be signed by you guys as a corrected fence viewing. So that gentleman can get it off of his title policy, saying that he has to build half of a fence when there's not a fence to be built. And obviously, you know, none of us were here in 1990. And it's just a matter of the range being, you know, wrong and that puts it completely wrong.
So you started off what year looking at these road records? 1947? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it was 1947 in most of the road records to 2009. There was two boxes of them. And I'm done with the county.
That's quite an undertaking.
Yes, especially when we have been extremely busy. And so do it when I can. And some of them I go a little bit deeper in depth because I know that there's problems. So those I try to get a little bit more. Some of them I found that there wasn't a resolution in it. So now I'm trying to find the resolution because I can't close it without the resolution because it just, you know, the paperwork that I got just says that it talked about it, that there's no resolution in the packet. So that's why I've got the resolution book from Kendall's office. Because that's where the road record is supposed to be, is in her office. But.
Right.
So, but I'm just getting it.
Very good. This is something we've been working on for years, so.
Yeah, we need to get it up.
To the point to where we could actually tackle. And you've been working on for basically the last year for the corrections, haven't you?
Yes. Yes.
Great.
And that way we can have them corrected and then work with Eric to get a new map made.
Right.
So we're not maintaining the roads that are closed and maintain the roads that we haven't closed. Or properly get them closed if we have the need that we need to close them.
Right.
So it's proper.
Correct.
So.
I appreciate all that hard work and looking forward for this to getting this done.
It's, I love what I do, so.
Yes, you do. Okay, I have Shane with me today and we had the pleasure of sitting in on a apprenticeship Zoom meeting here last week, week before, to go over all the fine deals, details of what they were offering. And this was ran by.
Lana Gordon.
Lana Gordon. And she's, her and I served in the legislature at the same time. And then she was appointed to Secretary of Labor in this Bamback administration.
Because we met with her and we met with the Secretary of Labor from Kentucky that's retired now, that are starting this program. Most of it's geared around like higher tech things, trying to keep people local. They've been doing it really hard in eastern Kentucky with people from coal mines that have been laid off over the years and retraining people to do other jobs to keep them in the area. We'd be the first county in Kansas to do it. And it's something that we can do through the county and do it with local people too. I've already talked to Peerless about it. They seem to be interested. And we haven't talked to anybody else yet, but it's definitely a good program to get involved in if we're wanting to try to keep these kids that do, you know, higher tech jobs local. Peerless has a pretty good need for those kind of people all the time. You know, we do a lot of stuff, maps and IT stuff, the city does. We've got several builders in town, you know, Lab Conco that would use CAD people, things like that. There is money from the state to these businesses and entities if they want to use them. Lynn and I just thought we'd get permission from you guys to go forward with this and see what we can get done and get it set up and try to start doing it.
Kind of one of those lead by examples type arrangements where we can, where we actually have the need for IT technological purposes. And this would be a great place to get it started and see if we can expand from there.
I agree. It's a great program. You told us about it a little bit last week, so.
So I entertain a motion to let, to allow Shane to go forward with the apprenticeship program. He does have the funds available in his budget to supplement that income if we need to. I don't think it'll be much, but it will take a little dedication from the county to make sure this program is successful.
I'll make a motion to allow Chairman Lynn O'Hara and our IT Shane Walker to move forward with the apprenticeship program within Bourbon County. That will help the county itself and private businesses.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So it looks like we got some cereal, malt, liquor, beverage license.
Does that mean we get to sample?
What's that?
Does that mean we sample?
I would amend the agenda to move the cereal malt beverage license to next week.
Go here a second.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now I get my cheat sheet out. Quit jumping around.
There you go.
Now you can go to executive session.
I wanted to get it out of the room.
Yeah, you were there, didn't you?
Ah, okay. So. I move executive session, we go into executive session under KSA 75-4319B. Want to discuss personnel matters of a non-elected personnel, respect their privacy. And we will go into top performance. We will for 10 minutes and maybe later longer after we have our discussion.
I second that.
Then we, then we will return. We will leave this room at 9:43 and return at 9:53.
I second that motion.
Persons to attend?
Aye.
Who's attending?
There'll be three commissioners and nine justices.
Okay.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Morning, Jason.
Morning, Mr. O'Hara. How are you?
So how's the mood going?
Pretty fairly smooth, really. Yeah. Yesterday was our first full day.
It's always hard when you move, well, with cell phones, it's not quite so bad.
Just working out, mostly tech, tech games. Yeah.
Sure.
Phones and internet. Yeah. We're fairly settled now, though.
Get rid of some stuff?
Hopefully people just, yeah, we did.
Whenever you move, there's always stuff to get rid of. Yeah.
A lot of purging, just stuff we don't need anymore.
Old pictures, old stuff that.
Yeah, just clutter, just downsized a little bit. Hopefully people know where we're at. That's our.
Put some signs out there, hey?
We've got signs, yeah.
All the time that I was in the military, had personally, and then my last duty station, Fort Monmouth, they were closing the gates and taking them onto Fort Leonard's. Facility I had, had stuff in there. I mean, I mean, you're talking massive facility. And they, it's like, it's like the county and the, what do you call it, federal government, they give you money to spend that you have to spend.
Justin? Yeah, yeah. Lakes?
He's not in there.
Did he go with you? But I don't know where he did it at. See, what happens is because it's not well planned, they've got to throw in the money at something, you know, to spend yours you don't get the next time around. Shoot, they spend all these, their training equipment. But I had them, it's kind of like I'm listening to what Will Wallace did, but it's all the way from the floor clear to the top stacked back in there. There's no way they'd use it, you know? It's ridiculous because they didn't plan well. And I find that's a lot of good. Yes, get rid of that.
It's a nice building, really, isn't it?
Good.
For as old as it is.
It's a good meeting.
I think it'll be a good, I think it'll be a good space for us. Keeps us downtown, too.
Yeah.
We're glad we could find a place downtown.
Cameron's got to walk a little farther to get her pictures.
Yeah.
Hey, is the clinic moving to the old Woods grocery store building?
You mean the Price Chopper?
Yeah, I've heard that. I've heard.
Price Chopper, whatever.
I don't think that's it for him. I think that's just to ruin it.
It's, I have heard that too. I don't think there's anything that's not.
Something's happening because I think we're really working at that wood, or at the Price Chopper building.
Yeah.
There's people under working. So what, who do you think's living in there? Well, the rumor yesterday was at the clinic.
CHC, is it thing?
Oh, really? So.
He's looking at all trees.
I don't know if there's a name.
Yes. We'll find out. Go ask.
If you believe everything, then I'll.
I'm kind of off it now, so, which is probably good.
Okay, Nancy?
Yes, may I? Sure.
I want to ask, is this a? My country's. And that, and can you think of any scenario?
There's budgets, but also the actual reports. The budget's different than the actual.
And budget reports. So it's hopefully not.
Because you get the AP and the AR, you have to see, you have to see, and we actually see that now that if it's a budget, then it's just me. They come in and represent their budget. This is what we want to do.
Do you have any other, hey, maybe I don't need that much. Pay for that one on the right. Thirty-five cents.
So. That you're going to do anything, how you might work that? Because they need to.
Anyway, I think there's.
Prior to your.
I want to sign, I want to, I had plenty of time to study. I had to use, at least for that report. I have to use, the history of that report. New she were regulatory commission, and that's not on, you got eight beds, so.
Right.
And ship equipment out of there, so.
It probably looks like we, quite painful, and we managed to have some old.
Yeah. And this Colonel, Colonel coming down there, and it wasn't, we had an authorization, what we get for equipment for what we want, and it wasn't a teletoprite, then.
Yeah, for sure, and then I'll work on.
You need antodes.
And a council.
I went, but I went through my officer training.
This might give you an idea what.
Exactly.
They could just have it found somewhere, so you can maybe just.
So things are changed, they changed the press last time around, really. But he just told me that I needed, even though it wasn't a top right.
That would be very interesting for Miranda that one day.
Soon as his staff was turned, I'm going to turn that stuff in.
December nineteen ninety.
Because it's my last case.
December thirty-first, but.
No, no.
It's interesting.
He never knew it got turned into a dish.
Yeah, yeah.
It's amazing, scary.
I'm just looking, think we got everything under control. I came in there and we had storage facility that had gas and metal, and plastic cans, or aluminum, plastic cans. And I.
I, I, I.
Because of the, 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 the.
The hands get rid of it.
Otherwise, everything has to go to the district.
So we don't begin funds, I can do this, I can do this, that's what we, so. The city, on the city level, because the.
Yeah, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money, especially.
So would, would maybe Susan, or city manager, would be.
Yeah.
Would she?
She's sitting right there.
The only thing I'm not seeing on this is. Oh, this is, okay. I go ahead first.
Yeah, it looks better, yeah. Take your time.
Going back to Patrick Pearson. Anywhere on that side?
Yeah. It's gonna be some big.
Ellen, um, Dr. Trump was reaching out to Allen County for, um. Now, um, now I come to got Neosha, right? And she might talk, but I'm not. How can it, not be that stuff?
Maybe you'll get that.
I don't know. Now, who knows? And I did that somewhere. Yeah, no. It was, it was like, um, he was helping. I don't know. And so he had, he was accepting. And it was like, oh. Anything to hide, right?
I make a motion, or a motion that we would be back in county commission, come out of executive session at nine fifty-three.
I second that.
No action.
Chair, second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's see, what's next, Gary?
Executive session and then county council.
Go ahead.
I'd like to request an executive session, KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy regarding job performance, three commissioners and Eric Bailey. Fifteen minutes, please.
Fifteen minutes?
Yes.
So we're going to leave this room. And we'll come back.
You think it'll make me do math?
Yes. I'm going to have to block in front of me.
Ten oh eight. Ten oh nine.
Ten oh nine.
Any discussion? Put it here, second, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Call addition. I know, it's not, that's why we'll help you later.
No, no, we're, it hits up, yeah. I'll just keep counting.
Yeah.
Should I, double check with Jeff? I mean, I guess if you think there's something legal, I can't hear.
No, no, we're not.
Sit me up to the camera.
Stay. So we agree, but now that Susan is seeing those sides of things, maybe she would be one to facilitate other joint, and I know that the city has had to. Because I think it's getting on the next one. We just need to do, what are the things we need to do?
All right, definitely.
So. Okay.
Because when you're looking at Lake County. Income coming into their city. Right now, it's just the district report goes to state.
Don't get me started on that. Don't get me started on that topic.
She, she brought it up.
I've been working on that for.
How do we get that down the road?
Well, I'm excited about this in city.
Okay.
Really excited.
Okay.
I hope, I hope this, this talks, you know, I hope.
How old is supposed to be this weekend? Nine, nine, nine.
Really? No.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Saturday, Saturday night or day?
No, I saw, I saw nineteen and I saw twenty-two and I thought, oh, it's not. And then you're telling me no.
The low is like below.
That's what they said.
Like seven or nine.
Two more than that.
Sixty more.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna enjoy that tomorrow.
Maybe around the park this, but maybe I'll save all our work for the weekend.
Yeah, the weekend, yeah.
It's out, it's out now. It went out of the night, night and plus with this morning, so.
Well, the winter, the winter hasn't been that bad. You haven't been getting.
We have, and at nine degrees, they're, they're not efficient.
They get hit with underwear.
February is just a cold month here, isn't it?
Kind of like, I know a bit, well, we had that week in October, but the last several years, we can get hard hit in November.
Yeah.
And then we kind of mess around.
Yeah.
You know, it's like.
Yeah.
Little bit of snow and ice here and there, but nothing, nothing.
Not like these big.
No.
Sure the chips are happy to be in Tampa Bay. Yep. Hi, so glad we're here playing Super Bowl and not in Kansas City.
Yeah, that would be nice. I'd say I'd be pretty weather eighty on the Super Bowl Saturday.
Yep, that'll be exciting, interesting. So did you ever get your sports writer, or is that something you had just doing?
That's just me, that's still me.
And Union Channel has their own kind of person who's doing it, kind of sending you information.
Yeah, they just, they have a, um, because I can't be in two places at once.
Sure.
You know, game nights.
Yeah.
So they have a student there that last year that, um, is actually interested in drilling.
Uh huh, good.
And so, yeah, she, she sends a little write-up that I edit every week.
Yeah.
And it's usually the, the recent game, the games that week. And then a parent sends me photos and stuff.
Well, that's, we're.
So I try to go when there's not a cop in Fort Scott, something like, there's no conflict, I try to get over there and get them down.
Okay, yeah.
It's just, there's a lot.
There's a lot, I mean.
And I'm one guy.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there might be something going on in town, one's going in town, one out of town.
It's not like the old days, it's not like the old days when we had spring. We used to have. Better people that, based on bill and send.
We were contracted or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, could do the work for us, help us out. In the old days, sports centers would have at least a couple of sprayers and. Can't do that.
Well, the sad thing is the newspaper issue, just like she went down, somebody used to get newspapers and answer the door and Allen County didn't have. And, yeah, they had to look before and it's kind of, it looks like, like he hit her miss, so she'll probably go to now and send you the paper.
Natural paper.
Used to be you'd get in.
Art paper?
No.
No.
The Star and Casey's.
Kansas Star.
Used to be you'd go to Allen County and she'd get me a Wichita Eagle and Kansas Star, the one. They said that way for quite some.
You guys, you guys get art paper, don't you?
Oh.
And we, we take it, we take it. We got time, we get right out of that.
Oh, I haven't done it very.
Glad to hear.
Well, we're in town so much as to.
We are.
For Al, I see.
For Al.
I checked it out.
But we, once he's over there, she picked up the Allen County newspaper. Because, you know, we have different slants on things. And one of the things that was interesting to me in the Allen County, and I keep hammering, they, they don't have a physician here on this commission or the city commission that says nothing but right-brings, you know.
He's going like that.
And it's, and it's a good thing, but here's the other thing, is they have a lady that was a nice article in the Allen County that I didn't notice. But you're, are you familiar with Nick?
Yes.
Okay.
Lee?
Lee.
Yes.
Jesus, that's cool.
Correct. Do you know, Lee will pay for a roof?
I didn't have to look at that, but that's good, they do.
I didn't either. They got a roof.
Well, I think that my mom has applied for their, for her house. I think she has applied.
I give them down during, what, what they do is, and my brother had his house done years and years ago.
Do, do you help with the insulation? Is that what you mean?
They, they come in and they do an energy efficient audit of your house. They'll replace one day, they'll add insulation, and, you know, they sue your cracks and all other crap. Evidently, they do a roof because they got a roof done by a local roofing company. And I was thinking, you know, and things, things, that I drill around this town, you look, if you, you get off the main section, you get out there and you see the houses falling down, older people cannot afford a roof, just think, if the city or county had somebody that, just like the tax office does here, that they help the older folks in part for the program that pays for the taxes.
For the home state.
Home state, that's it. And, and just think, if, if they had something in the county or city, help these people, because older folks don't have computers always, and old, older folks don't know this, but if you have somebody to help people. My wife did home healthcare for me, and these folks out in the country, some of the propane guys would actually bring up the lead back application, and she helped them fill the max, you know, I mean, that little bit of assistance can keep the city from looking, you know, run, run down and stuff. And the dollars, they, what'd they say? I think they said this week, I had something like eight hundred and some thousand dollars worth. Money's out there, go get it.
Our Department of Social Services, I'm not sure they have enough staff to be helping with that.
It's based on income, but.
Yeah. And there's always emails going out from our, we have a Burberry County Coalition, which is, we focus on families and children. And we have a meeting once a month, so that information is shared within the group, and then those people that are in the group are those that can provide the information, and we get it out to families. So, like, when you're looking at older populations, I don't think we really have a very good communication group for the, do we?
We don't.
Like for older groups, you know, older retired, or, you know, we have the senior citizens, seniors.
The ones that are on social media.
Yeah, we have the senior center, but I'm not sure there's a lot of communication that goes out from there. Should be a good thing that.
Yeah, I'm not sure how good it is either.
Maybe that's something you can work on, but, I mean, you got some good ideas there. I mean, that's, that's something that takes someone to step out there and say, okay, I will see what I can do to start something.
I'm just passing information on.
Like, you can do more than that, is what I'm saying.
I got my own stuff to take care of.
Well, good.
But if, but if you hit the right perk, it's just like, I, I had a friend that asked me how he can connect with veterans because he wants to recruit veterans. And I, and I didn't, my two brain cells kicked in, and I said, ah, they do have a program in the DFW that your quarterback's willing, and he can give you list of every veteran where.
In the county.
In, in the county, but however, it's not going to tell you whether it is qualified for your organization. Still let there.
Did you hear?
Yeah. Hey, they're coming back. Hear a voice.
Okay. Motion, we, uh.
Motion we move, uh, I second that.
Uh, no action. Do I hear any discussion?
No.
All favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. So somewhere, I lost my agenda, my way out of this. What's next?
You know, Mike.
Okay.
It is Mr. Meeks is next.
Gata Caffler. Morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, just one brief banter today. Um, I know that, um, we've been talking tax sale a little bit. The title company's actually getting our abstracts, that's what I call them. I mean, they're basically a, a brief title, title work.
Justin?
Yes.
Is that going?
Yes.
Are we good?
Well, we had, we had some IT problems this morning, and I think that their, Shane's actually been trying to resolve it remotely, but that's why I brought the keyboard in. So I think there might be something happening where.
The green thing's bouncing.
But it's okay.
The volume control is working.
I'm not quite sure Shane was working on it.
Okay, all right, just wanted to know.
I, I have that IT at all.
Can you give me a, just a second? I need to pull something off the printer.
Okay.
We will wait for you. Sorry, I have to say.
Oh, it's all right. I have no original thoughts, so I don't lose like, I don't lose like.
I forgot what I was going to talk about.
Yeah, I don't, I don't ever forget about what I'm going to talk about.
That's okay, so you want to try that again?
I can.
Try it again.
Um, last year, um, during the budget cycle, um, we talked about the tax sale. The, the abstracts are starting to roll in, they're, they're slowly coming in, um, trickling is a good word, which means that we're going to start getting ready to file cases. So, I know that the, um, I think, were you, did you attend the last, did they have a land bank meeting?
Had a emergency one last night, I'm going to talk about that. The scheduled one is next Tuesday.
Okay, so you guys are moving forward too with some good stuff, hopefully, on that level too. So, um, there was twelve thousand dollars that was set aside for the tax sale. I'm, I'm all for transparency. I mean, if there's another attorney in our region that would like to take on the sale, I think that that is not a bad thing. Um, you know, obviously, we've worked pretty hard over the last couple of years to, um, work with the land bank. I still am a huge advocate of the land bank, but at this point, we have to move forward on getting these parcels on the sale. So, you know, hell or high water, stand the torpedoes, full speed ahead, whatever terminology you want to use, um, we're, we're going to go forward with the tax sale. So, we're at that time where it's, we're going to start filing them. So, just kind of giving you a heads up on that. I don't know how you want to handle that, but there is budgetary authority set aside for, for that work, so.
Yes, there is.
It's a lot of parcels, so it's a matter of, you know, how you guys want to handle that. You could, you know, increase that money if you need to, if another attorney came in and said, you know, eighty-five, I mean, it used to be eighty-five dollars a parcel, is what, you know, what the old, old contract attorneys received for that. So, and the only reason that we set that money aside is last year, we actually had to, um, get some support for my, my paralegal, and that's basically what this money would be used for. If, you know, I received that, I'd be basically giving it to, to staff, because it's just not, it's not, we're not able, there's no way I could do it by myself. It'd be a full-time.
Did the sheriff's department back, years back, help with the tax sale, or?
Um, Sheriff Coleman used to be the auctioneer.
Okay.
He was good at it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, they have to sign off on it. I mean, there's, the sheriff is involved in the tax sale. They have to, uh, um, basically certify the sale. So at the end of it, they, yeah, the sheriff gets a form and he signs off that it's sold on the sale, and so the sheriff's office is involved, and we appreciate their help. I mean, last year, we only, we, we, last year, we raised the most money we've ever had in a tax sale, but we only sold ten parcels because we were actually asking for the special assessments and the taxes that rode on those parcels. And we went through the entire sale and, you know, ninety percent of the items didn't sell. But we'll have Hidden Valley, we'll have all the stuff in the county, and then hopefully the land make, makes some decisions, but if we need to, we'll sell every parcel in the city limits. And it's basically three years' worth of, you know, parcels, because we've delayed for numerous reasons on, on just hoping to have the best outcome for our citizens, and really the most bang for your buck. I mean, some of the things they talked about in the city, and that this was, you know, public knowledge, we talked about it, they had a special meeting about special assessments. And so you look at a special assessment when it comes to a lot that they have to mow, and then, or a lot where they've torn down the structure, and that assessment gets attached to the property, almost like a lien. And so in prior sales past, they've decided to waive those special assessments for the, the parcel to get back on. The tax sales, well, it gets interesting. You know, that parcel might only sell for a hundred dollars, and it sits there, and nothing really happens with it because you don't have, uh, the ability to get title insurance. And that really, you know, I hope people understand that that's kind of where this started, and it's no blame on anyone, it's just, that's the procedures and policies of the title company. And so if you don't get personal service, you have to actually wait fifteen years before they allow for ti- uh, title insurance. And so that means you can't get a loan, you can't really sell it, you can't modify it. So, now the landowner can go through the process of actually clearing the title, but you have to get a lawyer, you have to publish, you have to try to get personal service. I mean, it's not just wave of the wand and it works, so. If you think about it, I mean, the law makes sense why that happens, because you don't want to be able to give somebody's land away without them knowing about it. So that's kind of the, boiled it down to its essence of why you have to go through all that, because what I'm doing on our end is we'll publish, we'll send certified return receipt, but the minimum standard for a tax sale is just publication, and that's not personal service.
Right. And we've been, we've been dealing with that for years.
Yeah, we have parcels within our county and, and the city that you have ancestral homes that there's no one left. And so to find the next of kin, you have to go down the chain, and it, it's hard to do, and you have to try to do that.
That takes years.
Yeah, I know two really nice parcels in, well, more than that, but I know two really nice parcels in our community that would be a really cool place to build, but they're ancestral homes that there's no heirs left. So, it's just a matter of trying to find those and go through the proper procedures. And we've talked about this before, I'm with the new commission, you don't, I'm not aware of this, um, but it's, it runs about eighteen hundred at twenty-three dollar, twenty-three hundred, twenty-four hundred per parcel to get, on average, to get cleared title, because you have to do publication, person, try to get personal service, file with the courts, and then just the legal time involved. We are, we have looked into, we were looking into a way to maybe do a, do this process with a whole bunch of parcels up in Hidden Valley, you know, kind of weigh the magic wand on all of them, which would save a lot of time, energy, and money for the administrative staff at Hidden Valley. And that's what we talked about legislatively too, going through and hopefully having some process, maybe this year or next year, to have, you know, have minimum manatories, instead of three or four dollars and ten years of thirty dollars of uncollected taxes, or seventy-nine is the cheapest I've seen this time. But you think about seventy-nine dollars to foreclose on that property, you're spending a lot more money to foreclose on it and get it back on the tax bills than what it's going to be worth. You know, the time value of money doesn't make sense. That, it's always been an air tent for me. It just, it does, it's counterintuitive. I don't, and that's some of the things that's interesting about the, the land bank too, because you have a seven thousand dollar teardown. That parcel might only sell for ten dollars. Well, where's the equity? And that's where the land bank makes sense, because that parcel could be dumped into the, and this is me, just my opinion, I'm not talking on anyone or advocating for anything. I'm just saying, it makes sense for someone to try to maybe hold on to that parcel until another parcel becomes available, combine the two lots, or let the neighbors come in and, you know, instead of highest bidder, and then not have anything happen with it. And you're still losing a ton of money, because that lot's not going to sell for sixty-five hundred, so.
Well, the land bank is going to get very aggressive on properties like that, Justin, that, you know, has connecting properties to it that the neighbors might want to buy, so we've got some big plans on moving forward with that, so.
Well, I think, I think, I think, hopefully, you know, there's people, I've, I've had questions about the land bank for the last couple of years, and some communities have used it to a really big advantage. You know, Parsons comes to mind, Pittsburgh, you know, obviously Wyandotte County has taken the land bank to a whole nother level and, and changed their, and changed their entire county with it, but, you know, Pittsburgh and Parsons, they, they've really knocked, I mean, they've knocked it out of the park with how they're developing it, because they're taking that demo that the taxpayers paid for, taking that lot, giving it to a contractor, and then letting them build a spec home on that property. And with our NRP's that we have in our community, it, five years, you don't have to pay your property taxes, you know, you get this brand-new home, but, but we need housing. I mean, there's a huge need for single-family homes, and so.
Well, that's one of the things that we're looking at is to, to resolve is the housing shortage in Burberry County.
Right.
Because you, we're looking to expand our workforce, and one of the biggest things that we, that we run into is housing.
Right. And margins, and right now, the construction costs have gone up because lumber and things like that, of, of, the cost has gone up. So anytime we can make, make the margins better for the contractor and for the buyer, it, it, you know, it's more attractive.
So who decides who, what contractor gets these, this land?
Uh, we're not really responsible. I mean, it would be someone that could build. I mean, if I was on the land bank, I would say, look, we'll give this to a contractor that can actually have the ability to build. I mean, there'd have to be some like eighteen-month or two-year agreement that says if the house isn't built, it would revert.
The land bank makes that decision, we don't.
No, county, the only decision the county makes with, when it comes to the tax sale is, um, who you're going to have to do the tax sale.
Gotcha.
That really is it. I mean, it's a matter, once you start the process, it kind of takes care of itself. I'll keep you updated, you know, on when they're filed, how many are filed, how many have paid, and we, Patty hasn't had a chance to do this yet, but it's, our demand letters have been effective again. I mean, I know of a couple parcels that were paid off, and we're, we're easily over six figures again. So hopefully it's more than that, but it's easily over six.
On the ancestral check, is there a limit? I mean, sooner or later, is it done? I mean, you have, what if you don't find anybody?
Well, the end, the end, if you do your proper procedures and go through the courts, the judge will sign off, and you'll be able to get title insurance.
Okay.
Our worst-case scenario is fifteen years. I mean, if the, the landowner decides to do absolutely nothing with that parcel, it'll be fifteen years before they're able to get title insurance. Now, they get a deed, I mean, you'll, you'll own that property, but you won't, but you won't, you'll have a hard time getting title insurance unless there's personal service. I, I'll, I'll be honest, that's one of the hangups that Hidden Valley has, because they know that this person can live in California, and there's been speculation on the internet. I mean, people buy them from Texas. I mean, it's just a matter of, and not every parcel that we sell, we don't, we get personal service on some of those parcels. We, we do. We'll, they'll sign the green card, we'll put that in the, the court file that shows that the return receipt has been accepted, that we have personal service, and so we, we do on, I'd say a third of the parcels, probably more than that. I don't want to give an exact number, but we get personal service on some of these parcels. But next year, we'll do seventeen and back, and then eighteen and back, nineteen and back, and then we, well, at that point, we'll be really caught up. And hopefully, I hope, I'm hoping that when the land bank, if it, if it does what I think it's going to do, the amount of properties that we have within the city limits of Fort Scott that'll be on the tax sale will diminish dramatically. Because that landowner will just sign that parcel over into the land bank, and then the demo can happen, or, you know, they, once they condemn that home or whatever, they can just sign it over, and then they have personal service. They might not have to tear the home down, they could have a contractor come in and try to rehab it or whatever, so. But there's, there's blight everywhere. It's, if this is a rural, this is a rural problem. It's happening all over the, the country in rural America where you have homes that are no longer occupied, and they're to a point where, um, your cash, your benefit analysis doesn't make sense to, to rehab them. Or they're in the wrong place. You know, there's numerous issues that occur, but you drive around our, our county, and there are homes that are vacant. We all, we've all seen them. So.
Sure enough, you want to bring in, last one I give up for discussion to follow up?
Yep. Um, I was handed the, uh, I've reviewed this. This is the taxable general obligations bonds for series two thousand twenty, it's dated February ninth of two thousand twenty-one. It basically is, um, a public offering for the obligation bonds on the, um, the jail. It's basically refinancing. It, um, the underwriter has a fee involved, but with the interest rates that you guys are receiving, um, you'll be saving quite a bit of money. I have not, as of this morning, I have not seen anything on the sewer district, but based off of when they've got those bonds, I have a feeling there's going to be a pretty substantial savings if interest rates stay the way they are. But I have, I have reviewed this.
And all it is, is basically signing what we already approved.
Yeah.
It's just refinancing documents.
Never had a, a approval to sign the, the documents, so. Just follow up.
Good, sounds good.
And one of the parcels that Laura Holdridge talked to me again about today, she's doing some due diligence on it. It's one of the two that we talked about in the first part of the, the meeting. Um, we're hoping we can come to some resolution, but we'll probably go into executive session about that next week if we can't get a resolution to it.
Okay.
Because unfortunately, we're going to have to. No fault of anyone's, it's just a matter of misinterpretation of what occurred back in the, you know, twenty years ago.
Want to get that to me so I can find it?
Yeah. I can't make that motion. I have no power to do that.
We already have, haven't we?
This is, this is a different, yeah, that's a different document.
Different document, I'm moving, that, uh, that I'd be allowed to sign the receipt and representation for the five point three one zero million dollar bond refinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Same figures, uh, principal amount is five point three one zero, uh, less the underwriter's discount. The total purchase price, the, the net amount is five point two five six nine hundred.
Good.
Four-year information. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Jess?
Uh, well, well, I know that the, Eric started made the comment, but the, the wind farm is starting to heat up, so there'll start being a lot of documents that, um, we'll be presenting to the commission as time goes on about, um, heavy equipment, you know, all the different things that they have to give us notice on, you know, forty-eight hours before, on, on the roads and things of that nature, we'll be presenting to the commission so they know the wins and wears and the who's and what's, what's happening out there. So, the transfer station, it's pretty amazing how fast it's going up.
So, yeah, that, that, the transfer station is, uh, is basically another one of those that has, be off the tax road for ten years, uh, but when that substation comes online to be substantial on, on the tax revenue side. So along with what we're getting, uh, for the first ten years, and then, then the wind generators go on the cash rules, then the substation goes on the tax road too. So it'd be a pretty significant increase in the revenue. Anything else?
No, there's some things that are percolating, um, that are going to possibly come, come in issue down the road, but I think Susan is going to be meeting with the chairman probably this week to talk a little bit.
Jeff, you're right after this meeting.
After this meeting about some budget issues that were, we were made up. Susan and myself and another county employee met yesterday, and, um, hopefully the chairman and Susan can get those resolved, so we don't have to bring them, you know, in front of the commission per se. I mean, it's what we always do.
We're preparing for, we're preparing for the audit.
Right. So, we're working. I've, I've been really impressed with Susan. I mean, it's. Oh, she must be sitting. Eric looked over there like, who's, who's behind me? Susan's walked in, I.
Get that, Jason. I can't see this guy.
Well, after the yesterday's meeting, I about hated your guys. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, you know, that's the thing that people, it's hard to let people know what we do on a daily basis. You know, Eric brought it up that we, you know, we've, we've met a couple times on the wind farm. We, I mean, it's, there's always things happening, uh, day-to-day operations about how, as Commissioner Beth has said, it's a multimillion-dollar business, and we have to work hard to keep the wheels turning, so we appreciate your guys' leadership, but sometimes the day-to-day stuff gets a little stressful. So we appreciate your guys' leadership, but sometimes the day to day stuff gets a little stressful.
Clayton.
Yes, sir.
Here's your copy of that paperwork to be re-irritated.
So.
Thank you for your time, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
You might want to, can you stay around for Mr. Tom and?
Yo, I'll be here. I'm okay. I don't leave it to you.
I don't think so. Okay.
Jim, here's your copy of the two marks.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Anne Dare.
Yeah, I already talked to Justin and I called Doretta. I'm sorry. This is. I'm going to do this, I'm sorry. Yeah, that I probably should have really been listed on the upper part of the agenda. Because I do have a topic and not to, I do have comments about that too, but all things.
I can get it.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I was glad to hear some talk about the wind farm um today, this morning. And I appreciate hearing that. My name is Anne Dare. I live at nine eighteen two hundred and sixteenth Terrace. Good morning and thank you for serving Bourbon County. I'm here to get today to give another update on the Jayhawk Wind Project. I believe that communication is key in any relationship and the more the better, especially with a project of this magnitude. Just to let you know, I met with Jeff Spangler, the public liaison for Jayhawk Wind, twice in person. And again, last Wednesday over the phone about the progress and timeline for construction of this project. I will attempt to give you a brief outline of what we can hopefully expect going forward from here. As we speak, the transfer station slash substation is being constructed on land owned by Jim Keller. They are in the process of finalizing all the paperwork needed to present to the investors with the final project details. Part of this process is that a letter has been sent to leaseholders for their approval on any changes that have been made to their leases during this time. They're rate waiting to get all those letters back. After all that paperwork is done, investor says, you're good to go. A general contractor will then be hired and announced and proposals and the hiring of subcontractors will begin. And the hope is that around the end of February, there'll be several public meetings. So when you um scheduled the evening meeting, I don't know if that's something that might get thrown in on that evening for our first public meeting on the twenty-fourth, so just kind of stay aware. To display maps and answer questions, and Mr. Spangler doesn't have a full picture of what that will look like, especially in this time of COVID. He hopes to use TV, newspapers, social media, the county website, the Jayhawk Wind website, possibly Zoom. And he is always willing for people to come to his office. My hope is that you will do everything in your power to help him set up as many meetings as possible, including the use of any building and a sound system. Around March first, proposals will be sought for the construction of the throwdown yard to be constructed on land owned by Jim Keller. Also, if not before, they will survey all roads and bridges to be used with, to be used. And they'll do that with Eric Bailey and I thought Frank Young was going to possibly be a part of that conversation. Yeah. And I'd like to see Jim Harris and Will Wallace as a part of this team too. And I did check with Justin on the meeting on Friday if it would be okay if I went. And with he, he thought it would be okay. So if there's not any other objection, I I would kind of like to be there. Mid-March might be the earliest that construction of access roads in the throwdown yard will begin. Of course, all this is contingent upon there not being any holdups at any level. And of course, a big factor is our weather. But one thing we can take away from the Neosha Ridge project is that there isn't much that slows down this industry. For clarifications, I would ask that you talk to Jeff Spangler and I apologize ahead of time if I don't have the details exactly right. I became aware of another concern as I watched the City Parks Advisory Board meeting from January twenty-first. They are planning improvements and it occurred, I think that's the date of the meeting, I could be wrong. They are planning improvements and it occurred to me that there might be construction workers moving into Gun Park for up to a year. I reached out to one of the members of that board to make them aware and that they might want to take that into consideration as they plan to update bathrooms with showers. Are there other parks that the county maintains that also need to have a plan in place for this influx of workers? The list keeps growing when I think about all the needs addressed. Other parks, dump stations, laundromats, and even law enforcement. Some forethought needs to be put into these things. I would like to remind you that two of you sit here today are here in part because of statements made, or at least the perception that you gave and the willingness to put something in place that would slow down the abuse of this industry in our county. I expect you all to do your due diligence in making sure that the voices of all of our citizens that will be impacted by this industry will be heard, whether they are part of your district or not. If you've only heard from leaseholders, it's time for you to also hear from non-leaseholders and be ready to mitigate any concerns during this time in the years to come. Why do I do this? After all, I don't live in the footprint. I can't see them from my back door. At least I hope I can't. If you go out south on sixty-nine highway on the overpass, you can see the lights at Moran. I do this because I feel compelled to stand in the gap for those that, as of yet, find it difficult to speak for themselves and are still very angry and even heartbroken that some of their dreams won't be fulfilled. Any comments or questions from you all? Okay. Thank you. I do have a couple of other things under our topics.
Oh, this is a public comment.
Is it?
Yes.
Nancy, do you have anything today?
Yes, lunch is finished.
Okay. I guess the question I had, when you've talked, Justin's talked about the tax sale. And is there any grant money available somewhere on the planet that would help with the teardown of these houses? Because it's improving our, no, okay.
Yeah, the teardown process, you know, is interesting.
You need to get over there.
Sorry.
Go somewhere.
Somewhere.
I'll stick here.
Thank you.
The um, there's, there's different worlds that exist in our reality when it comes to the tax sale. So the city of Fort Scott, we have no control over teardown of any properties within their city limits. That would include the city of Uniontown, you know, all the municipalities within, within our county. We'll sell their, we have to sell by statute. We have to sell their properties by statute. And that's what we can't discriminate. You know, that's what we have to do, you know, the entire county. So grant money, things like the economic development for teardowns, you know, that, that's on, that municipality make those grants. I know there's grant money out there, but it's far and few between. Because that houses usually by the point they come, where they get the red sticker, they pass the point of no return. And so that, it's really hard to rehab a house like that that is, and plus, it's owned by, it's owned by an individual. And it, that that person that when the teardown occurs, that person still owns that parcel. It doesn't belong to the city. It's just a lien, the teardown lien, like a construction lien is on that, on that parcel. So the people still theoretically own it. So if they wanted to sell that parcel, they have to pay off the lien. But it's still owned to them, owned by them until they don't pay their taxes. So you might have an eight thousand dollar teardown, a two twenty dollar a year tax, that should be more than that, like sixty, seventy dollars a year for taxes. And um they could pay that in perpetuity and that, that lien would stay on that property until God calls them home, you know, so. We have no control over, and that'd be interesting for, for Bedco to look at sometime, you know, because housing is a huge issue. So that's kind of a universal.
And the list gets longer.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, housing is probably, I mean, for me, I think housing would be in the top three or four issues that we need. Because without housing, we can't get people to move here. Suitable housing.
Well, you know, and we talk about some of the employment and the amount of of people that that live outside of our county and drive to work in Bourbon County because there's no housing available.
And you know, and this, this is, once again, a opinionated comment, but, you know, knowing people that are in the industry that build homes, it's, it's a risky proposition. You could build a home and and a brand new build. And right now, the the rate per square foot is the highest it's ever been. Lumber is the highest it's ever been. You build a home and you end up sitting on it for six months to a year, you're not making money on it. And those gentlemen and people that build those homes, they're not in it to lose money. Because they won't stay open. I mean, it's, it's a business. And so we've talked to people within our community to go out and try to rehab an entire neighborhood or take homes that are dilapidated. And once they do their price point and go in and look at what it's going to take to rehab them, it's not cost effective. With anything, like you want to remodel your kitchen or redo your bathroom, there's costs associated with it. So we've looked, we've spent our, we've done our due diligence on a couple parcels within our community and talked to a real estate agent and contractors and the, and the, the points don't, it doesn't make sense. We're trying, we really have. I mean, we've, because we were excited about some of the, some of the homes being rehabbed, but it's just, they were too far gone. And that's, I mean, the city can't take, the city is not going to make people homeless either. Because some of these homes people live in.
We do have a process.
I'm going to put my city hat on for just a second. We do have a process that we are going through right now. We're trying to get the land bank very active. And so what that does is allows us to take in properties into the land bank. And ideally, our whole goal is to either get it back on the tax rolls to benefit both the city and the county. But with that process, we have outlined, like, the properties that are going on the tax sale. We've put it on a map so that we know where there might be an area where there's a lot of homes. And when, once you bring it into the land bank, we would like to find a developer that will go in and maybe address some of those areas. So be very methodical about how we're taking in property into the land bank. So there is a process that we're going through. And housing rehab, there are grants for that. And so we try to, try to do that as much as possible, but it's very, very competitive. So that's the other thing.
Yeah, I watched the land bank meeting last night. It was fascinating, I guess. Or I'm a glutton for punishment. I don't know.
Another project we've been working on for a number of years is the land bank.
Okay.
That we've been involved with this probably at least four years.
Okay.
Maybe longer, trying to get the groundwork to where we could actually do this. And it sounds like we've made some progress.
Uh, my final comment today has more to do with scuttlebutt on Facebook and CHC and the clinic and buying price chopper and all of that. I don't know if any of you feel prepared today to make a comment publicly, but maybe sometime soon it might be wise. That's all.
Okay. Any other public comments? Nancy?
Hey, hey, guys. My name's Nancy Van Etten. I live at seven six four hundred and ninety-fifth street in Jim's district. I'm glad to see that the work session's going to finally happen on the roads. That's been something that's been talked about, no goals have been set for the last four or five years. So I'm glad that that's going to be happening. So thank you for that. With the commission meeting for the evenings, I think three o'clock's way too early. I don't know why you can't just start at five and just, you know, let people be there for the whole thing and be participating. That's what I would recommend. I guess we'll see how it goes at three, from three to six, how many people will actually be able to participate. With the apprentice program, I think it's a, could be a really positive thing. I'm hoping that for any new program that you guys will approve of, you look at the cost benefit of it. How much is it going to cost the county? What's the really benefit going to be financially? You know, when you look at money and personnel, what's the actual benefit going to be? And that's something that I think the finance person should probably be taking a look at also to give you some input. For the um health mall, I'd like to make sure we're still progressing with that. It seems like a lot of executive sessions might be about this, but we don't know what you're talking about. I think it's very important we get that third anchor tenant in there. I hope we're not going to just let it go. Also, something with your executive sessions, it seems like a, a lot of it is being, meeting with personnel issues. Is there a way to consider sharing a human relations resource person for the city and the, and the county? I think maybe that would help alleviate some of these stressors maybe you have. And you could really focus on issues that, such as economic development and about the healthcare for our community rather than having to deal with personnel issues. That's it. Any response to that, any of those issues?
Well, I know on executive session on personalities, by law, we have to make sure that, that we do protect privacy of the people that we, we talk about. So it's very difficult to name people and what we are doing in most of all those executive sessions. Because when we go in for personal matters of identifiable, we are identifying people.
Right. Is there a way that maybe to have a human resources person actually be hired by the county and the city to deal with those issues?
Human, HR is one of those things that is a goal that we're working toward, but we're ways off.
Right.
We've really never addressed HR to the, to the level that the, that the county should be at.
I think people, people have to understand, I think Commissioner Beth talked about this about a month and a half into his, his term. Our former government doesn't allow for decisions being made by non-elected officials. So the treasurer has her own reality, the sheriff has his own reality, and the commission has their own reality. And Nancy hits on one of the frustrations that we have with this form of government is without the commission's approval, an HR director can't make decisions. They don't have the authority to say yes or no. Or no one has the ability to fire or hire anybody except the elected officials. So when the commission goes into executive session, they're actually talking about a certain individual. The HR director isn't going to be able to say, they can say, hey, this happened. They can talk to the chairman about that, but the other commissioners can't know about it unless they go into executive. Because they'd be violating Kansas Open Meetings Act if they talked outside of this meeting. So because of the way our government is set up, these guys can't make decisions arbitrarily and unilaterally. They can't go out and talk to an employee arbitrarily or unilaterally because they would be violating the trust of the commission and also borderlining on having coma problems. So it, it's been an ongoing active problem that I've seen while being county council for the last seven years. It's all for one, one for all. And we've talked on numerous occasions, once the commissioner leaves the room, they're no longer a commissioner, they're a private citizen. And so it's caused problems in the past where we've had HR problems and we didn't have the authority or the ability because of the way the government's set up to move forward on, on those types of issues. So we've experienced some pretty traumatic HR problems in the last seven years without being able to resolve it without going into executive session. Because we can't, there's no other way to do it.
Is that the state statute or is that just the county?
No, no, it's.
State statute.
We would love, we would love, I mean, that's state statute, absolutely. I was going to make a comment, but I, I stopped.
You know, at the state level, you got state rights, at the county level, it's a little difficult to get through.
Right. Well, that's, that's the nice thing about our former government, though. You look at other countries and, I mean, not to get philosophical, but, you know, the reason that those three districts in the county is that your voices are heard through your commissioners. And if one commissioner is given the information and able to make decisions unilaterally, the other commissioners would not have any input and their people, their districts wouldn't have a voice. I mean, a commissioner could just say pave my road and the other commissioners wouldn't know that. That would cause problems. Well, fire this person, the other commissioners wouldn't have input in that, or hire this person or change this person's job function. If the other commissioners didn't have that authority or have that input, what, what's the point of the commission? So that's kind of, but it, it has detriments. It, there's been problems. And we've talked about it in an open session on a couple occasions over the last couple of years about there are parts of our government and how it's set up that is frustrating. And that HR is probably the most frustrating part of it.
It is.
Ah, it's just extremely inefficient.
Right. Commissioner Beth has experienced it. And Mr. Harris has experienced it since his prior employment and knows. Because we can't talk about, if you talk about an individual in open session about their job performance, you will absolutely open yourself up for litigation.
But you're saying also a department head cannot fire somebody or?
No, elected official can.
An elected official can.
But no department head that I'm aware of has true authority to hire or fire. And it can be given that authority, but when it comes down to the departments that are not elected, which we only have two that are not elected, like Commissioner Harris or Commissioner Beth can't go to the sheriff and go, I want this deputy fired. It doesn't, it doesn't work that, it can't, it doesn't work that way. And what he said is sometimes it's not efficient. They have a disconnect. I mean, it's, that's the way, but that's, it's set up for that, that way for a lot of reasons. Because you're electing these commissioners to represent your district and you want them involved. I can go on for another half hour, but I'm not going to.
Yeah, at the end of the day, we have very little power setting these seats.
Justin, your five minutes is up.
Yeah, your five minutes is up.
Don't go too far.
And the health mall, any comments on that? Anybody?
What's that?
The health mall, any comment on that?
There is, I can't speak for CHC or Via Christi. We are working on trying to create a sustainable healthcare system in Bourbon County. Sustainable being the key word. Something, and, and I'll go back to one thing I've said for six months. My main concern is an emergency room in Bourbon County. At the end of the day, I don't care if that's down the hall here. We have to have that emergency room in Bourbon County. So there is work being done to create a sustainable healthcare system in Bourbon County. We, I should make that very clear. Yeah, is what you're going to, we do not own Mercy Building.
So we have, that hasn't gone through yet, that giving that mercy was going to do?
No. Mercy Building is owned by Mercy.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, commissioners.
Let me go first?
Yeah, you can go first.
Just to bring the commission up, we did have an emergency meeting last night at the Fort Scott Land Bank. Of course, Susan was there. The land bank did accept the donation of the building at ten North National. It's now being processed at the land bank, the deed and exactly. And visit with the city last night, they have some plans on shoring that building up and saving that building, which I think. up and saving that building, which I think that's great, because you know.
You mean the, the one that's got the facade left?
Right next to, right next to Sharky's. They're a very important building. So the land bank has got involved in that and is taking possession of that. So that's a big deal. We did talk about the tax sales coming up. They're gonna get very aggressive on monitoring those sites, working with property owners that, in the area that might want a bigger yard or just any situation that might help. So I wanted to report that. So land bank is, is gonna get very active. And I was elected to vice chairman last night, somehow, I don't know how, but anyway. My second thing I want to talk about, and Justin, tell me where to start and stop here. I received some complaints that we're not selling commercial tags on vehicles. And I realize Patty is an elected official. I also understand we stopped doing that because a person transferred to public works. But I also understand we advertised to replace that person. So can we not visit with Patty and ask her if she can train that person? Because these people don't wanna drive to Pittsburgh. Some of them has 12, 15 trucks each time, not all the same time. So I'm looking for.
The only authority that this commission has is policy and budget. So you can set policy for, you know, a handbook, policies for bidding processes, things of that nature. You know, when do people come to work, when they, you know, that type of thing. Even really on that level, there'd be some control by the elected officials. So I'm using the city of Fort Scott as an example because of how they're set up administratively. They have a commission that basically, they talked to their administrator, which is recently hired, we met him this morning. Well, in our form, and that really is the strata. You have a commission administrator, and then the administrator has different people that he can give authority to. He has the ability to control the operations to the day-to-day stuff. Well, in this case, we have three elected officials that are, is the commission, and then you have the five elected officials that are non-commissioned. And so what your authority is for those elected officials is their budget. You know, it, even then it gets interesting, because you have to, there's two of your departments that you have to fund to a point that is statutorily satisfactory. And that, that's interesting to banter about, because you don't really know what that is. You know, what, what is, what keeps the police department, you know, the sheriff's department running and the county attorney's office running? And what level of funding do they need? I mean, you're hiring an ACA at a certain amount of money. You know, that is interesting, because that's something that you have to do, is keep the, the courts going and keep your public safety going. So outside of those two, your other three elected officials is a matter, a matter of you helping them with their budget. So if, if Patty wants to not do that, she has every right not to do that. That's her, her decision as elected official. So it's, it's up to how she wants to operate her, her office. That's, that's her call.
I understand that, and that, I said that in my opening statement. It was certainly Patty's call, but I also ask if the commission could visit with her maybe next week and see if we can come up with a resolution to help our citizens. I know Patty makes that final call.
Right.
But we did replace that position. Patty's here, if she'd like to discuss.
Or we can put her on the agenda for next week, if you'd like. I think, I think we probably wanna put her on the, you might wanna make a, you can make a, a motion to amend the agenda, but I think if it, if it's the point where Patty can maybe have some data points and things that she might wanna, because she's just kinda got hit with this today. I mean, she can come in and you guys can have that discussion with her, but you, you can't tell any elected official what to do.
I realize that, yeah.
And there is, there is a, there is an attorney general's opinion that if you need to, I can put it off for you again, but.
That's not my point here. I was, I've said the request several times here is not to tell Patty how to do it.
Yeah, I know. I know, I'm just.
I'm just asking.
Well, Nancy kind of brought this up, you know, when I was sitting down before.
Yeah.
There are parts of this form of government that are, you know, they're just, this is how it is.
Yeah.
And that's just the process, so.
My goal is hopefully work with Patty and request that there's some way we can go back to doing the commercial tags for our people.
Have you, have you had a discussion with Patty?
Of course not. Nobody has a discussion.
No, I brought this up. I, I didn't know, I want him to tell me we need to do it next week or executive session. No, I don't go to elected official, I don't freelance anything. I come here first.
Right.
And get direction from you two.
Well, and it's just another teaching point. Elected officials, you cannot go into executive session, discuss matters that are of elected officials. I guess that, I'm trying, I'm stumbling a little bit, because it's, if you talk about personnel matters within the elected officials.
Right.
Department, if Patty wanted to talk about a specific individual and how their job performance is, or what their job function is, that would have to go into executive, because that's non-elected identifiable. If you wanna talk about how Patty or any elected official runs their office or how it's funded, that would have to be done in open session. Because an elected official doesn't have the rights under Kansas Open Meetings Acts to go into executive session. So it would be something that'd have to have a discussion out in the open, and if I was in Patty's position, obviously, it's time, energy, and money, you know, hiring qualified people and the, the amount of volume that comes through her office, you know, she's gonna have to have staff to do that. So, you know, it, there's always two sides of the story, so.
And I agree. That's why I requested that we could just maybe move forward and visit with Patty and try to resolve it. I fully understand we don't have any authority over Patty. I'm not looking for that at all.
Right.
I'm looking to work with Patty, try to resolve this issue for our commercial.
I think Patty would probably really enjoy that conversation, and I recommend putting that on the agenda next week.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it shouldn't be a surprise to you guys. I told you this was gonna happen. I told you, repeat, I told Lynn repeatedly this was gonna have to happen, because the person I lost was somebody who'd been here five years, well-trained. To do the commercial, they have to go to Topeka to train. Topeka's not doing any training right now. Plus, I'm sure, I've got one person in my office working right now. I mean, there's lines out here, you know.
I would, I would, I would, on some of the personnel issues specifically, you probably wanna go into executive session for, because there's, there's some personnel matters that I can foresee you want protected.
I understand that. And Patty, my goal was, again, I don't freelance anything. I thought it'd be out of place to come and talk to you about that.
No, don't talk to me anytime.
Well, I want these two to know what I'm doing, as far as transparency.
So one of the things that, that I've learned over the six years is, is, you know, you can have discussions, but you cannot make any decisions whatsoever.
Right. But yeah, you want them to come talk to you.
Yeah. And let's, let's, let's make sure we talk about this, so that we're completely transparent on this. Once you leave this room, you're no longer a commissioner.
Right.
And you can go and talk to anybody you wanna talk to.
You wanna talk about job function? Fine. As long as you're not representing the commission.
But, but one of the things that I would do if I was in your seat, which I never went, by the way, if I ever wanna be commissioner, and there has been some county counselors that have become commissioners, and that's not, I'm letting everyone know, on the record, I never wanna be a commissioner. You have the, have full transparency, you'd wanna come back to the commission and say, look, I talked to the sheriff, I talked to the treasurer, and here's what I found out. Because once you unilaterally do that and get that information and don't disseminate it, to me, it breaks down the trust, the trust barrier. So coming to the commission before and saying, I'm gonna go talk to Patty, I think it's best practices. It's not the law. There's not something that says thou shall do this, but it, it just makes best practices, because you want the other two commissioners to know what you're doing by, you know, in, Commissioner O'Hare hit the nail on the head, you can't go and tell the road and bridge director, hey, go pave this road or go fill this pothole, without the other commissioners knowing that you're spending their money. Because it's everybody's money, it's all one pot.
And I did just opposite. I told these guys first, before I went to Patty.
Right. And I, I think that's best practices.
I do, too.
You know, it's not mandatory, it isn't something you don't have to do, because, like, you know, Commissioner Beth now is the liaison for the commission for the sheriff's office. He's gonna meet with them whenever they decide to meet, and he comes back and tells you guys the information. I mean, that kind of helps Nancy's point, that it gives that connection that you have, so that you're not having to go into executive session to have those types of comments. So it, it's important.
When we visit with Patty next week, she'll share information with me that I can tell our citizens. Topeka's not putting on a class right now. We cannot train for this person. Maybe it's something in the future, when things change, Topeka or other things changes, we can, but this is information. But people call me and ask me questions, I'm gonna find answers for them.
Right.
Well, then you need to pick up the phone and call Patty, hey, what's going on here? I'll be glad to tell you. Like I said, I told you guys.
I understand that, but.
Patty don't have a problem to call me and, and tell me what's going on. I'll guarantee you. And I, and if I, if I have stuff, it has to come.
But no one in this room's gonna tell me how to be a commissioner. If I wanna talk to commissioners first.
No, I'm not, yeah, I'm just saying, call me. Don't even talk to me.
But we gotta be careful about something else, too. There's, it's called a string meeting. So if Commissioner O'Hare calls Patty and Commissioner Harris calls Patty, and you talk about the same topic and you try to form a resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's a violation under, under coma, that's called a string meeting. And you're getting a resolution or a decision made prior to coming into the commission room, so.
And one of the first things that I ask if I'm talking to him, have you talked to anyone else?
Right.
I have to make sure I make that comment. Sometimes I don't, because normally, when somebody calls me, I'm the first call.
Right. And that's what the, that's what the designation of the chairman is for, is that if Patty actually had a question that she needed input from a chairperson, and it's an emergency, because that does happen. I mean, I've got good examples of that over the last couple of months. That commissioner can't call another commissioner and go, hey, I need your decision on this. We have to have an emergency meeting, which you guys have seen, we've done, we've done that in the past, where we have an emergency meeting and we go into executive session. Ninety, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's a personnel matter. Someone has either tendered their resignation, there's a, some type of disciplinary action that's gonna occur, or there, there's an issue with someone being sick, you know, having cancer or, you know, kidney problems or things like that. So those are examples of where you have to have that emergency meeting. Now, sometimes the chairman, like in my case, when I'm dealing with the day-to-day stuff with legal, I'll call the chairman and the chairman will say, that sounds like a really good idea, get that ready for the next commission meeting, or please read this contract so I can have it for the next commission meeting. And if another commissioner calls me, which does, does happen, and they ask me to do something, I do that, because I know that I'm not gonna violate coma. And then I'm able to get the direction to get ready for the next commission meeting. So if Kendall calls the chairman and says, hey, I got this personnel matter, you know, that usually will come back into executive session. And that's what happened today, is you had two executive sessions that were personnel matters that were identifiable, that you had to discuss about a specific person that was brought up to one of the commissioners' attention during the week. And that's our HR function. And an HR director wouldn't be able to make those decisions. He would still have to go into that executive session, unless it's an elected official. Patty can hire and fire whoever she wants.
The nice thing about an HR director.
If she has the budget authority.
Nice thing about an HR director, they can, they can have all of the information, everything that really needs to transpire before they come to the commission, so we don't have to go out and, and try to determine what's going on at, at, at one meeting.
Right. Well, let's, let's go back to what Patty just said. She, she has, as long as she has the budget authority, she can hire and fire who she wants. The problem is, is if she needs to add additional staff, she has to come in front of the commission and request additional budget authority.
How many, how many slots are you down now, Patty?
Huh? From when I started?
No, no, no. That you have authority.
Huh? I'm down one. I've got one hired, but I've got one working from home, and she is working full-time. If anybody wants to come in my office, they can see she's working.
So if you wanted to, if you wanted to add a temporary person that was already trained, you could come for the commission and ask for that to happen, correct?
There's no temporary people that's already trained.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just.
I mean, that, that's where I'm stuck.
Yeah, I'm just making, I'm just making a, a.
Yeah, I mean, that, if Kendall or the sheriff or Laura Holdridge needed a temporary person, they wanted different budget authority.
Kinda like what we did with the ACA, 1099 and 10 March 1st.
Right. But, but to make that, to make that clear, I guess there's six elected officials, because I, the county attorney's office, I, but with, with, with the county attorney's office, she, if she had the budget, she didn't really ask for additional budget, she had the budget authority already to hire that person. That's where there's a difference. It's, it's all about budget authority. You guys, the elected official comes in, asks for authority on X amount of dollars, you guys either approve it or don't approve it, and then the elected official spends it how they, they see fit. And that's the really big difference between the city of Fort Scott and the county, is that the day-to-day operations are really on the elected official, and how they spend their money is dictated by what they ask for in the, the budget cycle.
Correct.
So when the budget's being, the authority itself is not a month-to-month issue, it's a yearly issue that is spent down. So when you have people that go over their budget, that's where you have the violations. And that's what Susan's working on now.
Okay.
And I understand all that, but again.
Kendall, would you put it on the agenda to have a, a discussion with Patty next week?
Thank you.
That'd sound good, Pam.
On personnel issues.
So I'm looking for in the discussion, I can tell the folks that call me what their plans are, or not. Nothing to do with going around you.
Okay, that's fine.
If I visit with you or the sheriff, I'm coming here first, to avoid this streaming problem and, and meeting violation. I'll request that I do this, that they'll pay, then I'll go to you or whatever.
Yeah. And the commission, the commission in the past, and even this commission, has given elected, elected commissioners to be the liaison for, you know, we have, we've, Commissioner Fisher was the liaison for the healthcare mall, you know, you know, Commissioner Beth is now that liaison. You have, Commissioner Beth is now the liaison with the sheriff's department. I mean, it, I mean, it's, it's possible if the commissioners vote on it, but I, I'm overly sensitive, because I don't want other commissioners to have the ill, ill feelings towards another commissioner for outside conversations that they have without the commissioners knowing it's happening. And then it also stops any potential coma violations.
I agree. Thank you.
All right. Anybody, anything else? Clef.
No.
So I understand that there's a department head meeting this week, is that correct? Do you know of one? I know Will Walls called one. Is that correct? He call you?
What's that?
Will Walls about a department head meeting.
He said so, but I've never gotten a date.
Okay, so we don't, that's not been done. Okay.
I think it's tomorrow.
What was that?
Really? She said she thought it was tomorrow.
I have, I hadn't seen a notice.
What? I think he sent it out. I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen one.
Okay, I don't think I've got, okay, I'll go check it, but yeah. Which is fine, we need a department meeting, but okay, I'll go check on it.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
I have nothing. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before you entertain that motion, are you gonna have one of the commissioners go